So I'll call to order this meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee at 6:02 PM. Do notice having been posted, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions may be made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. We'll do a roll call of members present, Mr. Fensy Maker, Ms. Ashley,
Present.
Ms. Ferrera,
Present.
Mr. Machado,
Present.
Ms. O'Brien,
Present.
Mr. Viera,
Present.
Ms. Kettle,
Present.
And the chair is present. Also with us this evening is our superintendent of schools, Mr. Jeffrey Schoonover, our director of business and finance, Mr. Ron Taro, and our director of special education, Ms. Megan Ashton, along with our recording secretary, Robin Baccaro. Could I ask you if you're able to please stand for the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. The next regularly scheduled meeting of this body will be on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, in the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School Library, right here. I want to extend a welcome to Ms. Ashley, who's a new appointed rep from the Somerset School Committee. Welcome back, Mr. Machado. And not really welcome back, but Ms. Ferrera is now one of the elected members of the regional school committee, so welcome to everyone. And I'll just note too that we will reorganize the committee at our meeting in May following the Berkeley town elections. Okay, the first item on the agenda this evening under student teaching and learning is a report from our student representatives, Ryan Viera and Hallie Cutler.
Oh, good evening, everyone. So just to start off with a few things regarding academics, so starting the week of May 6th through the second week of May 17th, that is the week of AP exam. So up until this point, students, teachers have been working hard to prepare for those two weeks of exams. So I know most exams are on the Monday, Wednesday, and then I think there's some on Tuesday for some virtual high school classes as well. And then upcoming this week's Thursday and Friday, there's a performance of Mean Girls. Thursday and Friday will be at 7:00 PM, and then Saturday, there's a performance both at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM.
As for spring sports, we have baseball, softball, tennis, track, and lacrosse. And as far as I know, lacrosse is enjoying their new opportunity to play. Clubs and extracurriculars, we have the Deca Club leaving this Friday for Nationals in Anaheim, California. And the Career Fair also happened last week, and we've had lots of positive feedback about the show.
And then, so I'll talk a little bit about what I know about something that is an event for juniors tomorrow called Credit of Life, the Credit for Life. So we had a presentation on it yesterday, so I'll talk a little bit about what I know, still a little confused, but we'll work through it. So Credit of Life is an event for juniors that's sponsored by Bay Coast Bank. It essentially teaches students how to go through healthy financial practices. So you'll go from, so you're given a software program on your Chromebook, and you select what occupation you're looking at. So you'll select your occupation, and it'll give you like a base salary, like a gift, it will assign you a credit score, and then you'll go through stations like buying a car, buying a house, renting an apartment, and then it will throw like rainy day events at you, and you'll have to try to budget through that. So that's tomorrow for an hour and a half during Period A. So all students that are in their wellness class, or I think it's a, any wellness class will report to the gym during Period A for an hour and a half for that event. So that'll be exciting, something new, I think, that'll be beneficial. And that is all we have for today.
Thank you very much. Anyone have any questions?
I just, I wanted to know if you went to Career Day, how that went?
Yeah, so I was actually impressed for the first year of having a Career Fair, having the, I think it was 48 or 52, something in that range. It was very beneficial to see the different aspects of what each professional in each different profession goes through on a day-to-day basis. So it was definitely beneficial to see that wide range of options. Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I do. I thought it was really well organized, too.
Fantastic. Thank you. Fabulous. Thank you both. Lots of good things happening, huh? And the sun is shining. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the HOSA Future Health Professionals Trip to Houston, Texas on June 25th through 29th. And I think this little book is here to, there's one.
Is this the best I can stand over here?
Wherever you're comfortable.
Okay, perfect. First, before I start, I just wanted to ask if anybody got the little pamphlet that I emailed out. Douglas, I'm gonna leave extra copies here just in case anybody needs them. Those of you who haven't met me yet, my name is Linda Littlefield. I am a Project Leadway teacher here, as well as a HOSA advisor. I do want to take a second to acknowledge Grace Tweedy, who actually joined me today, and Ryan Viera, who is actually both HOSA members. Grace Tweedy is actually the first place winner in HOSA in the pharmaceutical science, so very proud of her. She's one of the people that will be benefiting from this program, and specifically today. So thank you for joining me. So I am here today to discuss health occupation students of America. We always compete at a state conference. This is an opportunity for students to work with other peers and health professionals, and really explore health careers. It's a really great alignment tool with the Project Leadway program we have here at the high school. And we actually compete in different pharmaceutical and science and medical endeavors on a national and international level. The only people who ever get to compete, though, are the people who qualify at states, and that's very difficult to do. This year, we had three people qualified, Grace placing first in her field, and then we had a team of two that placed second place, which is Neat Mello and Jasper Troopman. So we have three students who are well qualified and going on to internationals, representing our switch. It's really so cool. It's hard to get there. I competed in the HOSA when I was your guys' age, and I only got there once out of like my four years, so it's very difficult to do this. With that being said, though, I am asking for not only approval for the trip upon contingency of your approval, you know, once you get the paperwork, which is actually heading your way this week, but I'm also asking for support and funding. This is a very expensive trip. Students do pay for it themselves. HOSA is a smaller chapter in Massachusetts. It's not like the other states where they actually pay for those winners to go to internationals. We have to pay ourselves, and we're a small chapter here at the SBRHS, and we're growing, but this is how we have to grow our chapter and how we grow our Project Leadway program. So I'm asking for your support and some dues that we do have to pay, one of them being the national fee, which is $90 for students to compete. That is just the straight out compete competition, showing up to the conference. It pays for their meals, their lunches, and their dinners at the conference, as well as the social gatherings that they have, where they get to interact with medical professionals across the world. In addition, I'm asking that you pay for the HOSA uniform blazer. That is a uniform that is specific to the international conference. It is required of the students to have the blazer with the embroidered emblem on it. If they don't have it, they risk getting kicked out of the conference, and I don't want our students to have that experience. And then lastly, the trading pins, which are a little bit less expensive. They're only $40, but this is a fun way for students to actually interact with other students internationally. It's a part of the HOSA competition that during the free time and when they get to go to the conference and just relax, they actually go up to one another and trade their state pins. We have to purchase those pins. I would love if our students could go with 50 pins and be able to meet one person from every state at minimum and trade pins with everybody. It's a great networking tool.
Do you even have any questions?
So what was the total per student?
Yeah, so the total per student, I apologize. The total per student would be $228, and then with $200 towards travel, so it would be about 448 per student, equalling up to 1,284 total completely.
All right, and what portion of that were you asking us to consider?
I am asking to consider to supporting us with $1,284 upon approval.
What's the total cost, though? I think that's.
Oh, I'm sorry. The total cost per student without any assistance is $2,328. With your support, that brings the total per student, with your support, down to 1,900. So our goal is to get it down to 1,300. We also have a fundraiser coming up called Kiss the Seniors Goodbye. The students will be selling pretty she kisses with like little candy grams. So we're working our way towards getting that price. But if we could just lower it a little bit to allow the students the opportunity to finance and maybe fundraise a little bit more, close the gap between the price and the eligibility to go.
Mr. Machado.
So today, you're looking to have us fund 1,200, and 12, what was the amount again?
1,284.
Eight-four.
Upper student?
No, total. Total. I can pass this your way, too. And the price breakdown is on page five.
All right, and that's the $90 for the national fee, $98 for the blazer, and $40 for the pins?
Yes. So it ends up being 228 per student that I'm asking at minimum.
And then there's the additional 200
For travel.
To defray travel.
Just to assist.
I was wondering where that is, so that's.
Oh, okay, yes, yes. So the 228 is the actual, like, the three things that they desperately need for this trip. I'm asking that you go above and beyond and donate additional $200 just for travel. These students work so hard. They're part of Project Leadway program, staying after school. This is not something that we designed during class, and they're in class, and they gotta grade for it. This is, they're spending time after school studying, working hard, learning skills. Grace, for example, was after school every day with me for like two weeks, it felt like, and she was donning her gloves, putting on her scrubs, counting out medicine, learning how to actually prescribe a medication, something that's not specifically aligned with PLTW, but it takes it one step further in our curriculum, and that's gonna set her up for her future. She's been now in the field essentially of pharmaceutical science. So now Grace will know if she wants to go into that field or not. She's had that exposure and that experience, and she's met professionals there.
Ms. Andrews, if I may add something. Earlier this year, I did apply for an Innovation Pathways grant. And the grant which we did receive funds are to support our biomedical and cybersecurity Innovation Pathways programs, mostly with equipment and professional development, but I did include $1,750 specifically to support students to attend this conference, knowing that we had the first year of success last year, and if I'm not mistaken, Ryan, you attended, right?
Yeah.
And did Allison? Okay, so we do have the 1,750, which I just informed Ms. Littlefield prior to this meeting that we had that money there. So that is already going to help alleviate some of the costs here.
And that number was not included in my little information graphic. I just found out about it today, so I apologize for not including it, but.
No, of course.
That is such a huge help.
Not your fault.
I truly appreciate that, and it's such a huge help.
So I just have a couple of quick questions. Regarding the blazers, this is more for Mr. Schoonover. Regarding the Deca blazers, how do we, is that something that we purchase for the students, or is that something? That is my only concern about, you know, if we fund the blazers for this. I'm glad that you have the grant, so I'm glad that that's, because that was a part where I was struggling, the national fees, the pins. It's just that I have to try to keep, as a school committee member, what's, you know, we did it for the Deca, that we paid them for the registration fee. So the only thing that I'm struggling with is the, are the blazers. So if that's something that you can use that 1,750 plus, that would be great, because.
Do you mind if I elaborate a little bit upon the uniform, just to fill in some blanks, because I know if you're not part of HOSA, it's always like, it's foreign land. You're like, who is this? What even is HOSA? So HOSA is actually designated, they want the state competitors to actually wear these blazers as well. Because Massachusetts is so small, and because we're still starting up our chapter, we are exempt from that for the next couple of years because we're a new chapter. However, I will say that when we go to, you know, our state competition, and everybody's in the blazer, and we're standing, it's almost a little like upsetting and frustrating, and sometimes it's a way of feeling left out. So my goal with these blazers is actually while we're purchasing three this year, I've talked to the students, and they're actually gonna donate them back upon after the conference, so that way we can use them next year. And my goal is that throughout more people coming into this program, qualifying for internationals, that we start building up that wardrobe, and that wardrobe would just stay in property of the school, and the students would borrow it.
That's different now.
That's my goal with it, at least.
Now it's more like school uniforms for sports. That's, yeah, that's a whole other issue now, because, you know, the Deca, I know the students keep them, I believe, at least to my knowledge. So now it's, now we're back to the sports. Now I can support that again, knowing that. I'm glad to give them as more information.
Yes, I apologize, but yes, I think that works best for not only you, but also for the students, because once they graduate, there's not necessarily much use for a HOSA uniform with the emblem on it, but it would be useful for incoming freshmen and whatnot.
Mrs. Schoonover, I just have a question about the grant. So the grant, is there a certain date by which the funds have to be expended?
June 30th.
Of this, okay, so this, and are there, and I'm assuming that this would be the last need for those funds? Like, is there anything beyond nationals or?
No, this is the highest level you can go in HOSA. This is international, so it's not just nationals. There is actually a group from China that's coming.
Okay, great.
So internationals, highest you can go.
So there's nothing that would occur in the three days between this conference? Just making sure. Okay. Can I clarify, then? Would it make sense to, for the committee, separate from the grant, to cover the national fee, the uniform, and the pin, which would be $228 per student, which would be, I think, consistent with how we have supported similar groups in the past? And then perhaps use the 1,750 from the grant to defray travel? Does that make sense to me? Any other questions? All right, let's see if I can put that in. In that case, then I would entertain a motion to approve, let's see, $228 per student for the, to attend the HOSA International Conference, to cover the national fee, the uniform fee, and the pin fee. And I don't even know if you knew this, but then to authorize Mr. Schoonover to use the remaining funds in the grant of $1,750 to offset travel costs.
Can I change the motion, if you don't mind? Because I think the original motion, the original proposal was for $1,284, and I'm assuming that includes the $200, correct?
Yes.
So I don't know where the 228.
Oh, per, 228 per student?
Did you flip to page five? Yes.
I have a.
Oh, I apologize.
But the two, I'm just trying to still, you have three students, right?
Yes.
At 228, that comes up to 600.
Correct. That's the travel expense.
Then I have a 600.
So originally, you had $200 for each student?
Correct.
Addition.
Yes, correct.
So now, because the numbers were still off for me. All right, so in that case, I'd like to make a motion that we take care of the national fees, the pins, and the uniform blazers that will continue to be property of the school for a total of $684. And do we need to make a motion for Ms., I don't think we do, because it's a grant. So that would be, that would be a motion.
All right. Second. So motion by Mr. Machado and seconded by Ms. Ashley. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. So voted.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fabulous work.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda this evening is to consider preapproval of the 2025 student trip to Costa Rica. Mr. Halbert, the HOSA company.
Thank you.
Been the last trip this end?
Yes, dude.
It's not gonna function, like.
I don't know if you want the digital presentation. Everything in the packet is what we have in the presentation. It's easier to scroll over the paper. The only difference is we corrected the 2:00 AM double talk in the, in the packet on our.
We were supposed to have a student representative for my last trip here, but I don't know what happened.
It was part of her civic project. But I did include the link to her presentation inside the electronic copy that you guys got. So I don't know how French you guys are for time, if you want me just to streamline it, or if you want me to go through the whole presentation. I don't wanna occupy your time as much, but.
Streamline works. You just digest.
Sure.
Much of what we have to say is the same as last time, you just in different locations.
For those that, for you, those of you that were on the board last, last time, we are coming back from COVID, and we're looking to do our travel programs again. This year, we just came back from Portugal and Spain, and to try to keep with our original five-year plan that we had prior to COVID, and then the world, you know, shut down. We wanted to run this year's trip, see how it went, and then we're gonna try next year's trip for Costa Rica, and then come back with another five-year plan, with the hopes that it won't cause a handout.
And that way, students, yeah, students will know freshman year what trips to expect, so parents can save money and whatnot.
So we decided to do South America again. We've done a global before. Then this year, we went to Europe, and then we're looking to go back to South America. One of our destinations from our five-year plan was Peru. Peru, there was too much political unrest right now, so we decided, you know, we were talking about possible Italy trip, where next year it's gonna be a Jubilee year, and the way that April vacation falls with Easter, we're just concerned with, you know, issues in Italy. So we went with the insiders tour of Costa Rica. And the reason why we went with this one is the kids are able to immerse in the culture of Costa Rica, as well as get to see the, you know, the rainforest and experience the rainforest. But some of the feedback that we got from our trip this time around is that there was some, some people felt like there was too much downtime. So we went with a traditional Costa Rican trip, where you have the science and the nature part, as well as the cultural integration, and where it's more organized, and the kids are more involved in, more activities while we're down there. So like all our other trips that we've been on, this is gonna be linked up with a morning credit class that the students will, when they come back, they'll share their travel experiences and present either at our multicultural week, our elementary schools, middle schools, and.
Or to you, Ms.
Or to the school community, if you'd like. Mr. Gleason, would you like to go over the itinerary? So when we do South America, we leave very early in the morning, so it's like a 2:00 AM departure from the school. We go up to Logan Airport. We requested to leave on the Saturday of school vacation, so it's not taken away from the kids' school time, but that does fluctuate sometimes, either Friday or Saturday. We don't do the booking of the flight, so it's one of those things just to keep in mind, but we did request a Saturday departure date, which would go Saturday to Sunday.
And like Mr. Talbot said and Ms. Cameravish, we did kind of highlight the Spain-Torqueiro trip recently during Multicultural Week. The students who went on the trip not only wrote essays and did various projects, but they also presented to their classmates during Multicultural Week, so we had, we had a good time with that. And it's great to see their perception of the trip, and they all took different themes, be it food, or the architecture, or just the music, and it was a really great time. It was nice to see the students reflect on the trip as well. So I'll just briefly go through our itinerary. We're gonna leave from Boston to San Jose, where we'll meet the tour guide, and then we're gonna move to San Carlos, where we're gonna focus on, there's a craft project. One of the highlights from our last trip that the students really liked was the engagement on some of the tasks we had as a class. We did a tile project, and we had a dance lesson, which was, two great flamenco dancers are right there. If you ever need a flamenco lesson, there you go.
There is a video out there. I haven't seen it, but I might want to see it.
So day two, we do get a craft workshop, and then we're gonna visit our school as well. So our students will get a chance to practice their Spanish firsthand, not only throughout the trip, but also in a school in Costa Rica. And then we'll have a nice view of the volcano, as you can see in the picture there. Day three, we're gonna move, and this trip, like our two chaperones, our group leader, who at times has intense trip, we're gonna move to the river for a nice boat trip in San Carlos. And then day four is Monte Verde. We take a bus there, and then they do have a horseback ride. So day five is also in the Monte Verde region, and they have some, we call them canopy tours, and they're raised canopies and the hanging bridges up to the jungle there. So we're looking forward to that. And then later in the day, we also have a cooking lesson. Day six, Punto de Remes, it says beach right there. It's not a national park. You know, it didn't look like you're, I don't know if you're calling it a five-star beach, but we'll be, I think they're gonna do some snorkeling that day, so we'd like the kids to know how to swim for this trip. Day seven is another national park, the Manuel de Tongo National Park, and then we move to San Jose before departing back to the United States.
And then just to point out, the, on day five, the hanging bridges, the purpose of the hanging bridges is when you have the ecologists going up in the canopy, studying the wildlife, the biodiversity in the canopy, so those are actual research station hanging bridges that we, uh, wanna.
Turn pages. I can't see that. All right, so what's included? So what's included in the trip? So the round-trip flights are included, just like last time. We're going with ACIS, who is, they're a wonderful tour company to go with. Round-trip flights with motor coach while we're there. There's no trains. We won't, we won't be on trains in Costa Rica, so we're gonna get that one off there.
Yeah.
Boats, yeah.
I'll just speak real quick about that. They try to keep the buses down, so we're looking, we're aiming more for 15 to 25 kids for this trip. If we do get more, they can handle that amount, but it's a small motor coach, you know, because of the trails in the regions that we'll be traveling.
We will be staying in three to four star hotels. They'll be centrally located. Unlike the European hotels, they're probably a little more remote, so when we're there in the evening, we're there in the evening. So the kids will have to bring stuff to do at night, and we'll have activities for them. We won't be going out for Jell-O or McDonald's or anything like that. They will be eating regional-style meals there. It has actually been made clear by ACIS, so they'll be eating a lot of rice, and beans, and seafood, and meat. Breakfast and dinner is included. Lunches are not. The kids have to pay, but they will bring us to a place that is safe for them to eat. Guided sightseeing is included, all of the bridges, everything is included, any entrances that we have, and ACIS does offer 24-hour emergency services.
And one thing I do want to point out with the travel company that we are going with, this is gonna be our third trip adult, fifth trip inside district with ACIS, both student and adult trips that we've run. But we're very comfortable with this company. We change companies after issues that happened with COVID, with EF tours. And just for peace of mind, even though we're going not now back, but more rural areas, they still vet out the restaurants and the eating places that the students will eat. You know, we see this all the time with other, you know, towns. And one of the towns in Massachusetts that actually just came back from Costa Rica, they had an issue with that, where they weren't bringing the kids to the vetted, you know, eateries and so on. So that's one of the benefits with this company.
And we really do trust this company, because we explained to you last year that after COVID, they changed their insurance policy. And we did have a few people who actually had to use it. So if they up their insurance, what's it, like $300, $400? If they up their insurance, they can cancel up to four days before for any reason at all. And we did have a few students who had to back out, and they did get their money. I'm not saying it's easy to get your money. There's a lot of paperwork, but they did get all of their money back.
We have a student that backed out that day, so, and we got the full amount minus the insurance.
Yeah, it was less than four days, and that person actually got it, too. So, can you go to the next slide, Mr. Gleason?
So the trip pricing is $42.50, and even though that is higher, we do have some scholarship opportunities through ACIS. You know, students. you know, if students book. So, if we do get the permission to go ahead tonight, we'll stop planning for the student and parent meeting to happen in early May. And then they're also offering us a 30-day risk-free. So, if a student signs up, regardless of the insurance policy that they get, they're running a 30-day kind of peace of mind, where if they decide, you know what, it's just not for us, it's too close, what have you, they can get their money back.
And in that price, the tips are actually also included. So, we don't have to ask the students for any more money.
Yeah, so it includes the prices for the round-trip AF air, the motor coaches. The only thing that we would be responsible for, and we've done fundraising in the past, is the transportation from the school up to the airport and back. Sometimes that's been covered by fundraising if we've done it, or sometimes some of the chaperones will kick in for that. These links, you have the electronic copy. But I did want to point out the Student Civics Project. Eva Caruso, she's a junior. She actually came with us to Spain and Portugal trip. She did some background research for the trip. And she actually asked students their feedback with, you know, how many, you know, the percentage that would be interested going on the trip. So, if you check out her presentation, I also included her slides on this as well in the back, where she couldn't be here because of the play. But I did want to share some of her stuff. The other stuff that's there is just, you know, the general things, in case you had any other questions. Undergraduate credit, student credit is, students can link up with, usually it's Southern New Hampshire University for us. They can get college credit for their trip and their experience based on some producibles that they would submit. The travel scholarships through the, through ACIS, that link there. One is an essay contest, one of them is need-based. And then also where the only free trip that we take or kickback, let's say that we get, is the group leader gets a free trip. We try to bring as many chaperones as possible. So, it's a sliding scale. So, like even though they'll give you a free trip for the group leader, it gets brought out to the chaperones. And we can also roll it down into students if there's somebody with like a very high, you know, wanting to go, you know, a big financial issue. I mean, we do definitely recognize that it's a lot of money to go on these trips. And this kind of trip isn't going to speak to everyone, mainly A, because of the location and some of the recklessness involved, but also, you know, the financial costs that's associated with it. So, we do want to recognize that, you know, it is a pricey trip. But this company is really good with the experiences that they give the kids. And again, this is why we'd be coming back for another five-year plan, where we can kind of plan ahead with the kids.
This isn't for, like you said, this isn't for everyone. The last trip that we went on was more about sightseeing and history and architecture. And it was kind of slower-paced. This is more for the adventurous type of the kid, who doesn't mind hanging bridges and walking through jungles and little critters running around.
So, if you can't tell, like Ms. Camaruso, it was like a hard sell for her? Like where I'm like, yeah, let's go and get it. But, you know, she wants to kill me, but that's okay.
I don't like critters.
That's my wife.
The last, well, we went to the Galapagos years ago. Mr. Gleason did not tell me, but there was a picture of a snake underneath me while we were snorkeling. And they didn't tell me until I got back. Which was a very good one. If I can do it, anyway.
But at this point, will open up any questions that you guys have?
I'll have one and you addressed it in some way. But the cost of the trip, it looks like a great trip, and I'd love to be on it. But I'm more concerned about students that maybe couldn't, or their families couldn't afford these. You know, how do you, how do you doing that to fill a gap?
No, that's a great question. I mean, ideally, it comes down to fundraising. One thing I do want to point out, like all the chaperones pay for their trips.
Right.
It's coming out of our pockets as well. So, we definitely know the burden of finances is going on this. But it's, if the kids are willing to do fundraising, we do as many fundraisers as possible that we can. Like car washes, you know, the restaurant nights. Last time around, we did a plan bar, which brought in a good amount of money and so on. They get social media app links where people can donate, they can do fundraises through social media as well. It's one of those things that, you know, you're always at that conundrum of, do you offer trips like this to the student body, knowing that, you know, some people will never be able to afford it, or do not offer it at all? And we want to try to offer it and see, you know, is there a way that, you know, some students might be able to go out and, you know, kind of get money for themselves, you know, through fundraising or looking at different organizations? Like, so when I was in junior achievement in high school, going out to Indiana for our international conference, I hit, like, you know, the ANVAC post something too. They helped cover my costs, as well as one of the Leo's Lions Club at the time. So, it kind of put me out of my comfort zone and maybe kind of ask and approach and kind of present. So, because I know my parents couldn't afford it. So, I mean, it's tips like that that we talk about, as well as, you know, fundraising. We usually go with what the kids want to do, though, for fundraising. Sometimes you'll have kids that know we're all set, we're going to find our own financing, or, you know, but we're there for them if, you know, they need adult self, you know, do the fundraising. The other thing that, when we've had this kind of question in the past, we had to research domestic trips. One of the members at the time wanted domestic trips. Why are we just doing international? And our point is, we're trying to hit places that maybe, you know, families wouldn't necessarily all go together as a vacation, you know, kind of expose them to that kind of trip. But we did cost out a, it was the... No, not Galapagos, Arizona.
Grand Canyon.
A Grand Canyon trip. And it was, the price wasn't a huge difference between international travel and domestic. So, that's why we're still staying with the international. So, again, like to wrap up, like we definitely, we're cognizant of the prices. And some people will definitely be alienated by it, unfortunately. But we still want to offer.
Any more questions?
So, the price that I see on here, I know you said that lunches are not included. So, is that in addition to this $1,000?
We usually have them bring some spending money. But to be perfectly honest with you, when we went to the Galapagos, it was a little bit different when we went to Europe, because we had so many things readily available. But we had, kind of had the kids trained, please eat a big breakfast. A large breakfast, and they weren't really hungry for the rest of the day. And we also had the kids pack snacks.
And then, like for the Galapagos and like for this trip here, we would bring extra snacks as well. A lot of times when we do fundraising, or sometimes we've gotten like contributions in the past with some of the chaperones' spouses, what have you, have given us spending money to bring for the kids, to basically kind of compensate for the lunches.
And so, and the Galapagos, we actually all took our kids out to lunch. We all, we all designated groups. And we all, we went to a real nice place, too, the Toad Guy Bar there. And we ended up paying for lunches, because we wanted them to have a good meal.
And it's one of those things, it kind of goes back to what Mr. Fessmaker had asked before, you know? Sometimes kids, you saw in this last trip, they spent all their money like the first day. And then you seem like, hey, we're going to go here. And they're like, you know, everybody was offered stuff with no, you know, giving, you know? I think we have a great group of chaperones, and they're very generous.
Mr. Michalina?
What happens if you have a student that, yes, I am daring, able to do it? And then you find out it's like a George Austin gets on top of the bridge and he's not crossing? And the reason why is, I'm going to pick on my niece, Eva Caruso. You know, this is the kid I used to wait in line for a water slide. And next thing you know, I'm walking her down. So, I'm just wondering, what is the plan?
There are alternative activities. So, with all of the chaperones, we could have, we're not going to make anyone. I'm going to be honest with you. If there's ziplining, I'm not doing it. So, I will be on the ground with the kids. But there's always something for us, something else for the kids to do. Or we could just be kids. We're not going to make them do anything.
They don't have to do the bridges, or the zipline, or the horseback riding. In the Galapagos, I think everybody swam.
Everyone did, yes.
But some people that, my nephew, for example, unfortunately had a bloody nose. And like, you know, he freaked out, because, you know, there's sharks in the water. And it's like, hey, kid, I'm going, bringing you back to the boat here. You know, like, you know, what, your nose? So, the poor kid, he like, I mean, he did get to sit on the boat and eat those cookies the whole time. So, like, I mean, who benefited there? But ultimately, it's like Ms. Camaruso said, all the activities, we do have the option of, if kids, you know, are afraid of heights, or, you know, they have the, they get to that point, they can either come down and then do alternative activities.
And a lot of those countries, they divide you up anyway. When we were in the Galapagos, we had to divide into our groups. So, this group was doing this activity, while this group was doing another activity. And there was one activity that my group actually had missed because of the boat. Boat rode down. So, there's always something else for them to do.
But when I was in Peru, I was doing a teach-along at Peru this summer. We did hanging bridges in the Peruvian rainforest. And one of the people that was with us, she was actually the last in line. And she just couldn't move off the platform. She was just definitely afraid. So, then one of the guides went up, took her down, and then took her to the rally point, you know, the headquarters where we were going to sleep that night. So, same kind of situation, how they were handled.
So, just to cover, so your target is about 15 to 25 students? And if I can count. So, we've got about 10 months, if we were to approve this tonight, till the trip, which is a pretty good amount of time for fundraising and planning.
They usually, just to correct that, though, the bills are due usually November, December-ish. So, we could still fundraise after the fact, and then they get the money back, kind of.
Okay, if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the student's trip to Costa Rica planned for February 14th through 22nd, potentially 13th, 2025. Motion by Ms. Ferrer and second by Ms. O'Brien. Any further discussion?
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
So voted.
Thank you. You see where you're from now, I guess?
Just out of curiosity, if we go forward with the five-year program, would you prefer it this year? Or would you prefer us presenting next year? Or like, when is the best timing thing for that? Or does it not matter? So, I know you're in budget season right now, and there's a lot of decisions to be made. And I don't want to occupy your time. But I also want to try to plan out for the kids as much as possible.
My attitude is sooner is always best, earlier than later, because of that one particular reason. Now you have eighth graders that are coming up, that they can already think about, you know, this is an opportunity that you have in the school, so.
It would be great before eighth grade night.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
George, you sure you don't want to go?
Thank you, everyone. The next item on the agenda is recognition of our March visionaries. The committee would like to commend Torrin Estabrooks, independent; Claire Gloucester, digital citizen; Connor Haney, resilient; Leland Irozari, respectful; Grace Caata, digital citizen; Brady Moniz, academic; Jeet Patel, academic; and Jacob Pavo, empathetic. Congratulations to those students for their excellent work. The next item on the agenda, under Business and Financial, is presentation of the audit report overview for year-end June 30th, 2023. And we welcome Anthony Roselli, CPA, for that presentation. He will be participating via Zoom.
Hey, Tony, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you hear us?
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, I can hear you now. Yeah, I can hear you. How's everyone doing?
Great. Good, how are you, Tony?
Good, good, good. So, Ron, do you want me to share the screen or with the financials? Or do you want to do that? Or?
Whatever's easier for you. If you want to share it, then you can drive to and switch, flip to the page as you want to go through. We'll give you sharing options.
Do you want to flip through it, just in case?
Yeah, okay, sure. We could do that, sure. So, Tony, this is a generic account. And I'm not logged in, so.
All right, let me.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to be able to, let's see, where are we? Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, so my name's Tony Roselli, and I'm the partner of the account for the audit of the, some is at Berkeley Regional School District. I don't know if there are any new school committee members, so just doing that for their benefit. And we completed the audit a few months ago. Got everything done ahead of the deadlines. Got everything submitted to your bond people, your debt people, a single audit. Everything basically got done. So, now we're here kind of to do, to kind of do this presentation. So, what I'd like to do is go through the more important financial areas. And then if you have questions, feel free to ask those questions. And we can go from there. So, one of the things I'll note before I even start into the numbers is that the district has done very well addressing the findings that we've had for the last several years. And we haven't had anything like overly significant, no material weaknesses or anything like that. But we've had a handful of findings that have kind of dwindled down. And this year, I really didn't feel it was necessary to really report anything that was a finding, other than some minor things that myself and Ron talked about. You know, really, really nothing that would be worth, you know, calling as anything significant or anything like that. So, in the one report that I did send, which is a governance report, we do, in that report, we do say that there were no difficulties. There was no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. There were no disagreements. So, it's a pretty much a standard report. We don't need to go through that, because it's kind of standard. Basically, I just kind of highlighted how that report reads. So, we can jump into the numbers unless there's any questions just on, you know, controls and internal controls and whatnot. Does anyone have anything, comments or anything?
I think we're good.
Okay, so let's jump into the numbers. So, on page of the financials, we're looking at page, it's a long page. Page 12, if you have it in front of you. And basically, we'll focus on, the first column is the general fund. And the district had $3.8 million in cash at the end of the fiscal year in the general fund. About 2.2 million of that, you can see, is either accounts payable or accrued payroll and withholdings. So, of the $3.8 million, about 2.2 of that is spoken for. So, in July and August, you're going to have these bills come due. The payroll is summer payroll and withholdings associated with that. So, in July and August, those will get paid, and the district's cash balance will probably go down to about, let's see, 2.2, in the low 1, 2, like 2 range, 2.2, 3.8, 2.2, about $1.6 million. Of that, if we come down here, you'll see that $1.4 million is unassigned. And that's the amount that the district has moving forward to the next fiscal year. That's the amount that the district has. Basically, that's unencumbered. It's $244,000 amount is an incumbent amount. And then this unassigned fund balance, it would include anything the district has, like stabilization funds, your E and D is in there. All sorts of things are in that particular number. So, that is your general fund, which is in great shape. The $1.4 million... Uh the one-point-four million is roughly about ten, ten or twelve percent of your um of your of your operating budget. So um so you've got some pretty decent reserves there. And uh remind me, Ron, did you go over the five percent or did you stay under on the E and D for fiscal twenty-three?
We um we stayed within the five percent, and we used some of the E and D to fund OPEB contributions.
Okay, so yeah, and then I'll get to the OPEB slide in in a few minutes. But um so you so the good news here is you pretty much you've you've um put some reserves away, but you've also stayed under the five percent. So um so that's so that's really good. You've kind of walked that fine line that the districts like to like to walk. The next column is circuit breaker. So circuit breaker, you have to spend whatever you received in the fiscal year, you have to spend the next fiscal year. So the district received uh or had nine-hundred-and-eleven thousand at the end of the fiscal year, and that needs to all be spent before the end of the next fiscal year. Otherwise, they um they reduce your, you know, they add that to your E and D, and that that's to become a problem. So um so that is one of the things that um needs to be spent. That's a, you know, a little under a million dollars, nine-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar. You can see at the bottom here. Uh yeah, high school building project fund had close to six-hundred-thousand in it. This is a an account that was used basically to build your seventy-million-dollar school years ago. That's kind of money left over that wasn't spent. And uh we've highlighted in the past that it should be repurposed. Is that being used for anything now, Ron, debt service or anything or?
Uh a portion of it is being used to offset the annual debt service payments as a percentage allocation based on the principal interest payments.
Okay, and and that is one of the acceptable uses under Mass General R is to to pay down the debt that created this uh on on an annual basis. So um so this is gonna probably be hanging around for a little bit, but but eventually we'll uh we'll get paid off. Or you could use it if you wanted on a similar type of uh uh project, if you wanted to repurpose the whole five five-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand dollars. So um the non-major funds, which is your last column here before your total, that's basically all your revolving funds, your grants, uh your your other special revenue funds, basically things that come in and go out. Um and uh, you know, any fund balance is just basically timing because you're not, it's not a um it's not a fund that's intended to accumulate resources in. It's mostly for ins and outs, especially like education grants. Okay, any questions on this particular slide or page? Okay, the next page is that we would look at is page fourteen. And that's gonna, that's basically your revenues and your expenses. So your revenues in the general fund were twenty-one-point-five million, and your expenses were twenty-two-point-one million. Uh the number twenty-one-point-five is probably higher than you folks have seen in your budgets for twenty-three. And the reason for that is uh the state pays the teachers' retirement uh portion, which I think was about two-point-four or five million dollars in twenty-three. We have to include that as a revenue in the top, an intergovernmental revenue, so it's up in the eight-point-six number. And then we have to include that also uh in the expenses as an expense. So it's a gross up, your revenue and expenses gross up. So the number you were probably used to seeing in your budget is somewhere in the nineteen, high eighteen or nineteen-million uh range for twenty-three, and that's the reason uh why that number is larger. Now, you had an operating uh deficit for the year, and that was intentional because I believe in the prior year, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, um that you had exceeded your E and D. So you had to uh basically lower the assessment in fiscal twenty-three. Uh so what that it gives the illusion of a deficit, but it's not a real deficit. It's intended just because you exceeded the E and D. Is that um is that correct?
That that's correct. Payments were issued back to the member communities for that excess E and D from FY twenty-two. It was done in FY twenty-three.
Yeah, normally you like to see a break even, twenty-two million in, twenty-two million out. But like I said, in this situation, because you exceeded the five percent E and D in the prior year, it it caused this to get you back reset. And for twenty-three, you were under five percent. So you won't see this in uh in your fiscal twenty-four report. Uh the second column is the operations of the circuit breaker, and one-million-seventy-one-thousand came in, nine-fifty-two went out, left you with the nine-and-ten balance that we talked about. Uh the high school building project, uh looks like a couple of thousand, was spent towards the interest expense. And there was a transfer out into, you'll see the twenty-six thousand that goes into the um general fund. That twenty-six was used to facilitate debt service. So at that rate, it's gonna take a little bit to pay down, so um but so expect to see that a little bit. And then, like I said, here are your non-major funds, which is all your revolving funds and everything. Two-point-two million went out, uh little under two-point-one came in uh for a for a little excess. But this is, like I said, all timing, because this is mostly grants and revolving uh funds. Uh any questions on um on this page? Okay, next, we can go to the OPEB. Uh the OPEB page, which is on page uh twenty, page sixteen. Uh you got a million in OPEB, million-one almost. Let's see how we got there on the next page. Basically, there was a large uh contribution into OPEB. Uh you had investment income of fifty-nine thousand, you had employee contributions of over a half a million. So your OPEB almost doubled, and that's a really good thing to see. I like to see that you're um looking at your operations year in the year and seeing if you have any extra funds that you could put into the other O into the OPEB fund. Because that was a fund that was doing not doing too well. It was it was very low. And at some point, that's gonna become a real liability to the district. So um so it's nice to see that there was some contributions made uh to um to to the OPEB trust. All right, any questions on any of that? Okay, and then in the in the that, we can look at your budget to actual out on page forty-three. Okay, it looks like your your revenues were under by about eight-hundred-thousand. And again, that's because of the assessment issue. Um so your revenues came in a little lower than you had forecasted in your budget, and uh and your expenses were basically flat, basically right on. So that's why your um your um your fund balance, your unassigned fund balance went went down. Um or you have an operating deficit for the year. So that is your budget. And this is a number that you're more familiar with that does not include the Mass Teachers Retirement um items. Okay, that's that's what I got. Any questions or comments or um overall, great job. Um I I Ron had indicated this may be the last time we talk, we're all together in the same room. So you know, that is still true. Great, great job, Ron. And um I think um you had a a handful of things that were there at the beginning. You weren't a Massachusetts accounting person, but you learned pretty quick. And we got to the point where we got some pretty good fund balances. We've got OPEB growing. We've gotten rid of all the findings. So I think uh I think the district is district is in a really good place right now.
If I could ask a couple of questions.
Ms. Tom Shadon.
First, to avoid any open meeting violations, can you explain what EED and OPEB means?
Sure. So it's excess and deficiency, and we have to actually go through a process with the Department of Revenue. So we basically, they do a validation to see what our revenues are, what our expenditures are. And we have to be within five percent of our previous year operating budget. If not, then we're exceeding the E and D. We can maintain up to five percent. And that's basically what E and D is. And we have to go through a certification process, aside from what the auditor's doing.
And OPEB?
OPEB is other post-employee benefits, and that is the basically the health insurance coverage for our retirees.
Thank you. Um the only really comment that I have for both the district and Anthony while he's here. Anthony, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Um obviously, last year, we returned money to the member company towns. That was a little disheartening for me because we had to, because it was over the five percent. We have a turf that's going to be needing replacement. What is our goal to replace this turf? Because how many more years do we have in it? One, two at most? At some point, we're gonna have to reach repair. What is the future plans? Are we going back to town meeting, asking the member communities for money? Uh because what was disheartening is we could have probably have paid a good half of it or not more to do. So I'm just wondering, that is the biggest expense that I foresee coming, and I'm just wondering, how are we going to handle that?
So I think that may, Tony, if you don't mind, I'm gonna put you on the spot. Uh we have a stabilization fund, and and if I understand correctly, I think a stable stabilization fund also has a limit, a cap that you can put equal to, not greater than the value of what the operating budget is. I think that's a five-percent cap as well. Is there other avenues where we can put some additional money away if we have some some savings in our operating budget to help offset the cost of this artificial turf replacement?
And?
And and track.
And the traffic, exactly. And and the other thing, obviously, we have a high school budget aligned. Is that something that we can use as about a half a million dollars there as well? Or is that only for physical building items? Or is that?
You're talking about the bond proceeds money available?
Yeah.
I I think we already got a ruling from bond council on that, that we can't. But we can do repairs to certain fields and areas around the building.
All right.
So I did I did have actually reached out to bond council on that. You can do it for that. But you can't do it to replace a piece of equipment that was already purchased by bonds.
Yeah, so right now, right now is obviously the football field and the track that I'm really concerned. And then I know under the superintensive, we're gonna be talking about the baseball field. So I was just wondering, when I when I see all of these major expenses that could possibly happen, I'm trying to figure out how we can handle it.
Is the goal to assess that back to the member communities? Or to uh just use, um if you have a favorable year, to use um money that's left over and 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 put it aside? Uh what 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 was the um?
The goal would be the latter. The goal would be to avoid having to assess the member communities and to instead find an alternate way to.
Because I'm, so right now, you have a general stabilization, uh Ron?
Correct.
And you're, are you capped on that, the five percent?
We are.
So the so the question really uh becomes is um, and I haven't been asked this question, so I don't know without the top of my head, but I can certainly find out, is if you can create a capital stabilization fund um as a another dedicated source uh towards um towards this, these athle, what is it? An athletic field, you said, that needs to be um?
The football field.
Correct. It's a it's a turf field in the the track around the turf field.
Yeah, so let me um, let me, let me think about that. I mean, you've got that little bit in the um high school, uh in that high school account, that right now you're using for debt service. But it's really at twenty-thousand a year, it's really not, that did things too much. And I'm wondering if you spoke to bond council, if that's something you could use? Uh because it is related to the high school. So I'm wondering if that's something you could use. Uh it would have to be repurposed. Um so that that's a an area that that could be explored. And then potentially setting up some sort of a capital stabilization fund would be another area um that you could um explore uh with your excess funds at the end of the year. So that that would be something that um I would have, I I can't answer right now, but I could could try to do a little research on that.
We appreciate that.
Yep.
So just to recap, so that Mr. Scunover is shaking his head because it sounds like we've already checked in with bond council.
Yeah, it's just, and Ron can um clear up anything that I uh misstate here. But the whatever we use that money for has to be um at least equivalent in um the life of the bond. So a turf field is going to be replaced every, say, twelve years or so, and the bond's length of time is more than that. So you can't use it for a a small investment like that. But if it does, if it involves, say, repairing our baseball field and and uh putting in a drainage system there, which, you know, would be a permanent fix, we could use the high school building project money for something like that. But you have to look at the life expectancy of whatever it is that you are repairing, replacing um and and compare that to the life of the bond.
So if if I could, so what you mentioned, if we only had eleven more years of the bond, would that be able to be used at that point? Because it's less, it's it's greater, the turf would be greater than?
Allow me to to dig up the the communication from bond council so that we're giving you the right information. I think Mr. Scunover provided a pretty good overview with the conversation we had. And I remember at that time, it was kind of a no, but you can do this.
All right, well, like I said, I I've been waiting for this meeting to talk about the turf because it's keeping me up at night, asking the town for a million-plus um or member towns a million-plus. So and I that's something I'm I'm having a difficult time doing so. Uh but it also hurts when I know I just gave back about eight-hundred thousand a few years ago.
Sure, I just just for those members who weren't here, I think it's important to know that the reason, the majority of the reason was because of the S and money and and COVID and everything else. So we've always been within margin. So I think that was a unique year, but it's always better to give than than us sometimes. It was better to give back, so.
But sometimes when you give, they forget.
You just reminded them.
Okay.
So and and just to, so I I think we have about one-point-four million in unassigned cash balance that's between E and D and our current stabilization right now?
Yes.
And so we'll explore the possibility of creating a capital stabilization fund, see if we could add to that. So obviously, the stabilization and the E and D will come out, and these projects are likely more than one-point-four million dollars, given the going rates, or at least a lot more, one to two? Don't anybody write that down or just spitball it.
George, don't write that down.
They're they're well north of a million dollars. Do you have any other questions? I would just like to um thank Mr. Roselli, and also I really wanna commend Mr. Taro and his team um for the incredible work that they have done. To have basically no findings is a great accomplishment and one that we very much appreciate. And I also wanna recognize um former member of our committee, Ms. Ramos Gagliardi, who um was a champion of um ensuring that we contributed to our OPEB fund a little more aggressively. And so I wanna thank her for that as well. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
This need not be your last audit.
I I'm I'm glad you acknowledged my staff because when I'm in the throes of this and trying to get the audit done, and we're, you know, trying to finish up the budget and get everything done, so it's good. I also will tell you that Mr. Roselli um and his team aren't afraid to ask questions and push the envelope and test us to make sure that we really are on task. Because if he's not doing that, then we're not getting better at what we're doing. So I I appreciate when he's sending new blood in and taking a look at or new staff members coming in, taking a look at that. That's what I want. Uh I I don't wanna be compliant and, okay, or complacent in what we do. Because you can't approve, you can't approve that way. So Tony, thank you for you and your team as well.
Thank you. All right, any anything else or?
No, I think we're good.
All right, I'll I'll see if I can dig out some some way to um answer your questions on this turf field. I'll uh I'll go um go see if there's a mechanism. I'll, uh, I'll go, um, go see if there's a mechanism, um, so you don't have to stay up at night, and, uh, and we'll, uh, we'll see if we can, uh, find something, some way to do it. And other than that, uh, Ron, we'll, we'll reconnect in the next week or so?
Yes.
And, uh, and thank you, thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you for your time.
Have a great rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
We'll continue on to business and financial. The next item on the agenda is the March financial statement. Mr. Taro?
Yes, um, so basically, you're seeing, and I want to just make sure I have the right report. I think I may have left it on my desk. Give me one second to open it up. Uh, I'll give you the abbreviated version. Um, we have, you know, we'll be, right now, based on projections, and where everything is, I was able to reconcile all the positions that we have, people that may have been on medical leave, leave of, of family medical leave, um, transportation costs, utility costs, kind of project those out, what the substitute lines are as far as the remainder of the year, health insurance for retirees versus active, we looked, I looked at those. So basically, you know, we're, we're gonna be ending the year in the positive. I have not completed my transfers to make sure I'm utilizing all federal funds, uh, which would be IDEA for, for, um, uh, for out-of-district tuition. I, and I did make sure that we're already using our circuit breaker money as allocated, received in FY twenty-three, we're using FY twenty-four. So we will be, we will be ending the year in the positive, um, and we'll be looking at prepaying tuition, um, up to, I think, on the region side, I was looking at both districts, about two hun-, we could pay up to two hundred thousand dollars for prepaid tuition for July and August, and/or make some contributions to OPEB, and/or maybe make a contribution to another fund based on Mr. Zelli's findings. And so we, we are ending the year favorably. Uh, there was some adjustments that I'm looking at as far as, uh, school choice, revenues where I anticipated we should be, are down a little bit, and expenditures are up a little bit, I think I reported that out when we were going through the budget process. But overall, you know, we're over in some lines, you'll see that, we spent a lot of money in some of the security lines, we made some improvements that came out of a report that was done a year ago or so, and we're continuing to make those improvements and make the investments, those one-time investments. Uh, we made an investment this year in Spanish books, and that's, you'll see the textbook line, that's over about forty thousand dollars, and that's because of that particular purchase to get those materials in now, so we didn't have to carry them in the operating budget. Um, and I think most of them pretty much on target. Special ed out-of-district tuition is still one of those things that are gonna fluctuate, and we're gonna, if we can make the transportation work internally, we're doing that, and that's, that's basically why we're at where we're at, so we're able to do some of those things in-house versus, uh, contracting out.
Anyone have any questions about the March financial?
Could you just clarify for me? I know, I saw a note at the end on page nine about the debt service principal and interest payment, could you just?
Yeah, so it actually looked like it-
In language I can understand.
Yeah, sure, so if you look at the, the last page, and I don't have, I don't have it in front of me, but the numbers are, um, I thought it looked like a, a deficit of about ninety thousand or eighty thousand. So what had happened was, um, I'm carrying an open purchase order for principal and interest, so it doesn't show like it was paid, and I closed out the purchase order because the debt service payment was made, but I closed it out in April, so it looks like we have it, we, we overspent for principal and interest. So that footnote says basically, if I reverse that, if that entry hit as of March thirty-first, then we would have probably had a positive, uh, balance of about half a million dollars in the account, four hundred, just about a half a million dollars.
Were you like five hundred and seven?
Yeah, I saw that footnote.
Okay, I just making sure I understood the footnote.
Yeah, all right, good question.
Thank you for explaining. Does anyone have any other questions? We always like to hear when it's to the good, thank you.
I'm always glad to report this.
The next item on the agenda is continued discussion of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
If I could start, one, um, I still feel very comfortable with the budget that we voted on, um, but it was great to get that memo from, uh, Mr. Schoonover regarding the proposed budget from the House, which, uh, I believe it jumps from thirty dollars a student to a possibly a hundred and four dollars.
Hundred and four, right.
So that's, you know, that's nice to hear. Obviously, it hasn't been approved yet, so we're remaining at the thirty thousand, but, uh, I, at this point, I feel, uh, reviewing it further, uh, I think the Budget Committee did its work, and I still feel extremely comfortable with that number at this point, so.
And then the updated Hou-, House budget, which is, again, not a thing yet. I don't think there are any other updates, is that right?
No, not really, uh, as Mr. Machado just said, that the House number would be an increase of seventy thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars over, uh, the governor's proposal, uh, but obviously, the Senate has to come up with theirs, and then the House and Senate will meet in conference and then recommend something out of that, so, uh, we'll just have to wait and see what happens over the next couple of months. The only other number I wanted to share related to the budget, and it's really, um, back in the last conversation, but just to give the, the numbers, you were talking about the E and D and the stabilization is about one point four million, uh, Mr. Taro presented at the public hearing, the E and D balance is eight hundred, just under eight hundred ninety-one thousand dollars, and stabilization is at four fifty-eight, four hundred fifty-eight thousand, five hundred fifteen, that was as of January thirty-first. So just so you have those two values, um, and five percent of a roughly twenty million dollar budget, we have thresholds of about a million dollars, I think a little bit under a million dollars, so that eight hundred ninety, you can tell for E and D is right up against that cap, close to it.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing on school choice participation for the twenty, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five school year, so I've opened a public hearing at this time. Mr. Schoonover?
Okay, so I, I, I apologize for not getting you the information earlier, but you, um, I know every year for this, I rattle off some numbers, I see people writing them down, so I just wanted to have, uh, wanted you to have the information for you, um, in front. So just, to show where we are right now in, for school choice for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, you can see the numbers by grade level, we have a total of fifty-five students right now attending Somerset Berkeley through school choice. Um, and then, at this point, we always look at Somerset Middle and Berkeley Middle, uh, what's the total population in each of the schools, which students, how many students are going to Diamond, Bristol Plymouth, Bristol Aggie, private schools? Uh, so, as of a couple of weeks ago, uh, once, uh, students found out if they were accepted to Diamond or Bristol Plymouth, now we have a better idea of what their, um, choices are. So for Berkeley Middle, uh, there are currently ninety-six eighth graders, uh, fifty-one of them, uh, plan to attend Somerset Berkeley, and that includes six school choice students. Uh, Somerset Middle School, this is our, the smallest class in a very long time that we've had, is a hundred seventy-three students. A year from now, we'll be saying how it's a larger class, uh, it's just a significant difference between the current eighth graders and current seventh graders, but we have a hundred seventy-three, and thirty-six of those as of right now, uh, we know that they're going to other locations. Uh, so really, we have a hundred, um, eighty-two students who are residents of Somerset or Berkeley, who we, uh, think will be attending Somerset Berkeley next year, uh, and then an additional six students from Berkeley Middle School who are school choice, who can come, um, who are grandfathered in to attend school choice here and are planning to do so. So that really puts us at a total, uh, ninth grade population of a hundred eighty-eight students next year, including those six school choice. Uh, I spoke with Dr. Brelford, and we're always looking at our school choice numbers, and you know, we, we've tried to often have about fifteen or so students, um, so even though, and this is a, this is a difficult one, because this is a smaller class, so there's definitely capacity to have more students come in, but then, I think I've expressed, I know I have, uh, in the past, um, just relying too much on school choice as well. Uh, at first, I was going to say, I was gonna have a recommendation of eighteen total, uh, students to bring us to, uh, two hundred, uh, but then that's ten percent of, it's a ten percent increase over our existing population, in ways typically, historically, we've been about five percent of our students, uh, have been school choice. Um, so, I spoke with Dr. Brelford, a recommendation is to have a total of fifteen, so it would be the six coming from, um, Berkeley Middle School plus an additional nine. Um, that would give us a freshman class, a class of twenty-twenty-eight of a hundred ninety-seven students, still, um, probably about fifty students under what we would typically, uh, what we historically had. Um, and I do have a typo on the second to last line, I had the, the approximate enrollment next year would be nine oh one, I was not including our eleven students in our eighteen-plus program, so actually, the, um, the, the enrollment would be, uh, projected to be nine twelve to start the school year, uh, with fifteen total school choice students, uh, which would be an increase of three students over the current year's school choice enrollment, so we'd go from fifty-five to fifty-eight. Uh, Somerset Berkeley's done a nice job of maintaining that enrollment of a thousand or so students, while every other district around us has experienced these significant decreases, but now it's getting to a point where it's affecting our two communities as well, um, at the same time where, and I, I think I said this at the last meeting or the meeting before, where our vocational schools around us and others are expanding, uh, when the total enrollment is going down, it's just, it's, it's making for, uh, a challenging situation for us, but, uh, anyway, for school choice, that would be, uh, my recommendation.
Are there any questions?
This past year, we also opened up some sophomore because of the closure of, um, um, Coil Cassidy?
Bishop Crum.
Bishop Crum, yeah. That's what everybody's gonna, well, Cassidy's closed now?
Well, they already did.
They already did.
They already did, all right. Um, so, my question, how many, um, how many students do we turn away last year? Do we know?
For the sophomores?
No, for-
Or you mean just for, for the freshmen? Uh, you know, I, I don't remember, um, we have the sixteen who are here, uh, I can't, I can't remember, we didn't turn anyone away, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Robert.
That, that was, that was my only question, because obviously, with a school of nine hundred and twelve, with a school that was built for a thousand, you know, A, I like smaller classrooms and potentially, but I always am terrified of losing programs that we might get to, especially after a year like this year was difficult to look at the budget, so, but, all right, that was, that was my only, it's not like we're turning away twenty, thirty, forty kids either, so.
No, you know, e- every year has been, some years are a little bit off of the others, uh, some years, we do, when we have to have a lottery, uh, there may be four or five, maybe up to ten in some years, where, uh, if we're accepting fifteen, we receive twenty-five applications. There have been other years where we received fewer applications than we had available spots.
Yeah, and-
And then sometimes we will have a lottery, accept someone in, and then they turn it down, and then ultimately, everyone who applied, uh, is able to get in because of some people making decisions not to come.
No, I, I'm just looking at it, uh, in a few years, it's going to be a little bit even lower numbers when Diamond, uh, Bristol Ag, I, you know, they're all be accepting more students, uh, so those are numbers that are going to hurt our school population as well, so, okay.
So I just wanna clarify, because actually this, I saw a question on social media about this the other day, and I didn't wanna answer it incorrectly, so I didn't answer it at all, um, but I wanna clarify, so for students who attend Berkeley Middle School through school choice, um, they are automatically offered, they're grandfathered in, for, like, that's our policy, or?
No, the, a few years ago, and I forget exactly what year it happened, uh, the state changed the, the regulation about school choice, so it had been, if you attended a feeder school, you automatically could enroll in the high school. Uh, a few years ago, they did away with that rule, and they grandfathered in anyone who was already in kindergarten at that point under school choice, is probably somewhere around upper elementary school at this point, where the, where those, where that grandfathering in happens.
I think it was two thousand nineteen? You had to be in by two thousand nineteen?
Yeah, it was, it was like eight, yeah, it was, that's right, because we were just looking at that.
Yeah, I think it was, you had to be enrolled by the two thousand, by two thousand nineteen, otherwise you are not automatically grandfathered.
So it's about fourth grade or so right now, give or take a grade level. So there, for, for the next, for the foreseeable future, for the next five or so years, kids are all set, but then after that, there isn't the automatic guarantee that they could come.
Okay, so they would be subject to the-
They would have to go into the lottery system like everyone else.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. And then just to reiterate, so, and then the, the, um, concern with limiting the school choice is also sort of to preserve the historical sort of balance or percentage that we've had in terms of students who reside in either community, um, and not to have so many school choice students that we change that drastically, is that?
Right.
Okay.
All right. If there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion to have, all right, let me fix this, nine plus the six, so is it fifteen?
Whatever.
Thank you, nine plus six, okay. I would entertain a motion to have fifteen spots available, um, for school choice for incoming freshmen, um, there will not be any spots available for upperclassmen, is that?
Correct.
So moved?
Second. Um, motion by Mr. Machado, seconded by Ms. Ashley, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda this evening is a superintendent's update.
About the, I missed, yeah, thank you.
Is there any public input regarding the trade?
There is not.
Madam Chair, I would like a motion to close-
So to close the public hearing, thank you.
Close the public hearing.
Um, so we'll redo that vote. So, uh, motion to clo-, motion to close the public hearing made by Mr. Machado, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ashley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
And Madam Chair, with the, uh, lack of public input on this, I would just, uh, refer back to our original vote and leave it as is.
Okay, now we can move on to the superintendent's update. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, I, I did share with you in a memo recently, but I just wanted to, uh, share publicly as well. Uh, the high school recently received, uh, two different grants, uh, in the amounts of twenty thousand dollars apiece. Uh, one is for, um, an acceleration academy that will be taking place this summer. Uh, this is, I think we've received, uh, two of these previously, I think this is the third time since COVID that we've received a, a grant like this. Um, so, the goals of the grant is to provide in-person instruction of about twenty to twenty-five hours, uh, in one content area during either a one-week or two-week, uh, academy, in small class-size settings, a dozen or so students, uh, per classroom. Uh, for the high school, for high schools to receive these grants, you have to target rising sophomores, it's really, is, there's the, the aspect of MCAS preparation involved with this. Uh, so we will be offering, uh, programs for rising tenth graders in both ELA and math during the week of August twelfth, so I'm sure the high school will be communicating, uh, will be identifying students who they want to invite in, but, um, uh, my guess is that we all, based on past history, there would also be other slots for other students, uh, too, if they're interested, but the high school will be communicating that information. Uh, we also received a genocide education grant in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, uh, and this is to support teaching and learning. Uh, this is to support teaching and learning related to the history of genocide. Uh, there are a number of priorities for the grant, aligning materials, curriculum, and professional development, uh, increase a- uh, access to high-quality genocide education, and opportunities to work in partnership with relevant organizations and local community members. So, uh, for Somerset Berkeley's grant, we are partnering with Facing History in Ourselves as well as the Bristol Community College's Holocaust Center to provide both professional development, um, for our teachers and guest speakers for our students. So congratulations to those who were instrumental in applying for those grants, uh, those successful grants. Uh, as Mr. Machado mentioned, um, he had a question recently about the baseball fields and, uh, we've had, I was, I was checking before today's meeting, uh, at least for the general Providence area, we've received about twenty-four inches of rain since the start of the calendar year, uh, including, um, about fourteen inches from March first until today. Uh, and we all know, we've, it seems like we have a discussion, uh, like this every March or April. Our baseball field has historically poor drainage. Um, has before this, that field, uh, on the south side, has had poor drainage since before this new building was constructed. And you couple that with historically high amounts of rainfall, and we have a baseball field that, if you look at it, it looks good, but when you're out there, as I was last week, it's soggy. It's, uh, there is a, an area or two of some standing water, particularly after the rain that we had the other day. Uh, and we did attempt to roll it, we haven't even had a chance to roll the fields yet because of all the rain that we've had since January. Usually that would take place a few weeks before the season starts, just to make sure that, uh, everything is level and anything that happens over the winter months is, uh, leveled off. And I, I think we had, um, we attempted it, and there was, um, I don't know, if, if a vehicle was, was stuck or, or just couldn't, couldn't, uh, really do what it was intended to do, and we haven't really been able to touch it since then. And we're hoping last week, with the warm weather that we had, and warm sunny weather Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, with some dry winds, that that was going to alleviate the problem, just dry it up enough so we can get the roller out there and, and do the, the necessary work. It's still not to the condition where we can even do that yet. Uh, our baseball team has been, um, they've been playing mostly on the road at this point because of that. They have had a home game or two in Berkeley, uh, which I understand the Berkeley baseball fields are, uh, very well maintained. It's, it's a great facility, um, but we have to practice at other locations, uh, and play our games, home games, um, there. So, there's, there's that transportation component that, um, we're now facing. Mr. Taro, um, Mr. Carrero and I have been talking about this, Mr. Francis, just trying to figure out how we can, if there's anything that we can do, but it's mother nature and there's no way to dry a wet field without having some non-wet weather. Just some sunny, windy conditions would be ideal. So, we are, uh, crossing our fingers that over the next, if you look at the ten-day forecast or so, that we should be able to get out there by hopefully at the end of this week, if not the weekend, because we do have, I think, nine or nine of the last ten or ten of the last, uh, eleven games are scheduled to be at home starting next week. So, hoping that we can do the necessary work to get that done. It's a lot of hoping, it doesn't solve the problem, but what the problem is, and getting back to the initial discussion about the, uh, high school building project funding that we still have of five hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars, uh, Mr. Taro, and, and just jump in whenever you, you want to, uh, he was, uh, speaking with, uh, a state, um,
State approved vendor, who we can bring in without having to go out to bid.
Just expedite the process, but when we do that, if we can get through this season, um, we'll have to get that done, that, and that does require some growing seasons for the work that they have to do. So, they, that could, if we do it in the end of May, early June, when the baseball season's over, keep our fingers crossed, we could play out there next spring. If it requires three growing seasons, a spring, fall, and a spring, it really, we would have to, um, we wouldn't be able to play on the field next spring either. Which has been the struggle that we've had with this, at the same time where we don't have a middle school baseball field. Uh, we, we really have, um, outside the high school, we have one baseball field left in town, a South Complex. That's large enough for high school sports, Partisville as well, but I, I don't know what's happening, um, there with creation, uh, the creation of some T-ball fields that were, um, planned. So, it's, it's just this, you know, all of these different circumstances are happening at once, creating this far from ideal condition for us, for our players. So anyway, that's, that's where we are right now, uh, we're, we're hoping, as I said, hoping that conditions change in the next few days and our players can get out there and finish the season strong at home. And if not, we'll continue to play our games in Berkeley and get, get our kids practicing in whatever ways that we can get them, uh, some time on some fields around here to practice.
Any questions?
I, I just have, obviously, I would like to fix the problem. You know, last year, we were hoping that whatever Band-Aid, if it was gonna be a Band-Aid, it was gonna be a solution, it obviously isn't. I'd rather prepare to use or ask the town of Berkeley to use their fields for all of next year and budget the transportation, have it, you know, if we do need the, the three seasons to grow. But, you know, one of the things, you know, when you're building these fields are to be used, you know, obviously, at the next town meeting, we're gonna be asking for fields. The purpose for the fields is to be used, and right now, when I hear that, you know, we're making last-minute calls because of the field is wet, um, why can't we have a field like Berkeley? And, you know, and that's what I'm trying to get to. I would like to see not, um, as a member of the town, as a school committee member, and also a taxpayer of, I would like to be sure that what I'm, or what I paid for is the correct item. So, uh, I really would like us to really consider fixing the problem, not finding a way, a cheap way out. So, that's, that's my only comment, and I think, um, our students deserve it. And especially when this town only has one or two fields, well, if we don't fix that, this town will always have one or two fields. So, that's why I'm really, would like to force upon ourselves to correct the problem now.
And that's why the high school building project money, if it's, and we can get the, the answer about the life of the bond that's still remaining, uh, and compared to the total life of the bond, but this is the type of work that that money, what, what we were told several years ago, is really intended for, a, a long-term project. We don't know what the, the cost will be, we'll find that out soon, and, but that high school building project money, I think, is, is the right avenue to, to fund this, so we can help, we can use the stabilization and everything else to help replace the turf, uh, field that, and, and track repairs.
And on the side note, whoever did do our fields, please let me know the names, because I don't ever intend on using them again, unfortunately.
Yeah, and this is why, and I don't wanna, you know, get into a Somerset Middle School building project, but this is why we're, we're planning on doing the fields there with the proper drainage at the very beginning because of the experience that we've had here. And we had that debate, uh, about should we do it, should we not? Like, we're not gonna repeat the errors that were made here, because there was, Carlos says, that they knew that this, that these fields had poor drainage. But we didn't, for whatever reason, you know, put the, the proper drainage system in to alleviate that and get the, the water flowing out and away and, uh, rather than puddling in our fields.
Well, obviously, you just heard from me as one member, I don't know how the other members feel, but, um, I, I just think we need to fix the problem, so.
I agree wholeheartedly.
So, we'll give you updates when we get this vendor in, uh, who can?
In, in part of it, Mr. Machado, I agree with you a hundred and ten percent. The last thing you do is throw a few dollars at something and never really fix it, because you're wasting money. And it's really critical that we find the right vendor who has the experience and the knowledge and the know-how to know what the, what the fix is, instead of us guessing. And so, I think we have somebody who's really, uh, uh, I'm optimistic about this person, but I, we have a meeting coming up pretty soon, so we'll make sure we keep you posted.
I, I would do, you know, ask the questions, because even though they're on the bid list, if it's not the correct person, then that's useless to us, so, um, so I'm glad that you have that same mindset, let's do it.
Oh, absolutely, that's the only way I will.
All right, great, well, look forward to an update, I would have a chance to meet with that vendor.
And just, I always ask Dr. Bresford i- if there's anything that she would want me to mention, but, uh, everything she said, Mr. Viera said, uh, for her, career fair, credit for life tomorrow, AP testing, um, and she's also going to be surveying all of our students, I think she's sending it up tomorrow, just to get their feedback about the career fair, uh, so we can use that to plan next years. But, um, I was able, uh, to be here that day, attended, um, six or seven different sessions. Uh, they were all, everyone I went to was outstanding, uh, we had, um, I think he said forty-eight or fifty, uh, different people who were here, from filling up the Performing Arts Center and the DLC, to twenty or so people in classrooms all over the building. Uh, there was some, eh, just a variety of different occupations that were here, and it seems like it was really well-received by kids. So, we'll definitely be doing it again next year and, uh, looking to expand it. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Schoenover. The next item on the agenda, and I believe Mr. Machado requested this at a previous meeting, kind of spurred on by our budget conversation that we had, um, is, um, some information about the district's responsibility for school nurses, and I know that Mr. Schoenover provided us with a communication, uh, earlier today regarding that, so in case you have a chance to look, it is in the folder now.
Well, um, if I could just, um, you know, there is this concept around town or around social media that, um, schools are required to have nurses, um, and though this community and the district has always had a nurse in the building, um, and we will continue to do so with our current budgets, uh, not only the K eight and also, because obviously, that has been proposed so far, but here at the regional side, uh, we do have in our budget a nurse, but it is, there are times where, um, you know, a nurse will be out and a lot, the very quick thing, people say, oh, we're not in compliance, they're going to report us to the DPH. And seeing that letter, it seems like asking parents to come in is a legitimate reason because of the hard-to-find, uh, substitutes and things like that. I think a bigger picture for the administration is, now that we won't have a floating nurse, is we may wanna come up, we may wanna have a future joint meeting and allow nurses to jump from district to district, but that's more of a joint meeting discussion when, uh, if the time being, because I think the concept of having a nurse at one building might not be the correct, uh, practice moving forward. We may have to stop moving nurses, um, from building to building to accommodate the needs, especially if nurses are out on vacation or whatever the case may be, personal days, so. But it was really good to hear, I know that, you know, obviously, there are students that have a requirement. Those are different issues, but I don't know if we do, but, uh, um, but the letter makes, you know, now if people come up to us and say, hey, my child, uh, didn't have a nurse, and, um, but I also think that we need to have a plan in place with the administration where if the child has an allergic reaction or needs, uh, insulin or all of that, someone from the administration or folks from the administration should have access to that. If the child, in high school, might be a little different than, uh, obviously, grade schools, but, you know, if the student is capable of providing, you know, sometimes they know better, like, um, Ms., Dr. Bresford said, sometimes the patient, the student knows better than the actual administration, which is great, uh, as long as we are there to see and if the parents allow it, but I think we need to put a plan in place, and I'm sure we do. But I wanna make sure that with one nurse at the high school, that we do have other folks with the keys to, uh, the box and are ready to actually, and trained to do the work that might be needed.
And one very small update, but in the re- in recent, we've added two subnurses to our sub-list, so at least we, we still continue to post for substitute nurses, um, and that, we do not have a lead right now, so I, I interviewed one of the nurses, um, worked with me, and we interviewed another subnurse. So we did recently add two subnurses to our list. Um, I did reach out to two other, uh, agencies as well, because we do contract with agencies. Um, and one agency that does not typically do per diem nurses, um, is willing to work with us. So, I told them, right now, we're in, we're in a decent place, but I would like to follow up with the meeting, uh, over the summer so that we have something in place if we need to use that for the fall. We do use cultured care right now, and there are times that they're able to send us someone, and sometimes they're not, so I wanted to have another agency that we could work with, but we will continue to build our sub-capacities and hope that if, you know, um, nurses are able to put their time, other than sick time, obviously, in, ahead of time or field trips, we'll able, we'll be able to plan effectively and, um, have the coverage.
Yeah, we do have, uh, it's happened in the past where we've had nurses, even between districts, will go and support one of the other schools, whether it's, you know, one of the two nurses here in the past going over to support Somerset School, or we've had it in the past where, for some reason, this building didn't have the nurses, and then someone from Somerset came over to support Somerset Berkeley. And, and even, uh, I had a conversation with Mr. Yulucci, um, a couple of months ago about this, and he said, hey, have you ever thought about contacting the town nurse? And I said, you know, I, I had not, and so he, he made that recommendation, saying, hey, if you're, if you're in a pinch, if it's a day that person is in Somerset, not Swansea, give it a shot, uh, you know, she might be able to come over and give some medication or, you know, whatever is necessary.
Thank you for that information. The next item on the agenda, um, although I think we, I think we're gonna table updates from Somerset and Berkeley at this point, so we do not run afoul of, um, open meeting law. Uh, so then the next item on the agenda, topics not anticipated by the chair, forty-eight hours in advance, I don't have any. Action items for future meetings. Anything other than what has been discussed this evening? An update on the baseball field situation, once we have one? Um, we'll also await an update after the auditor has had a chance to do research and confirm with Mr. Taro on a capital stabilization fund, any of the items?
So, can we get some information on the schedule for uniforms for sports?
A rotating schedule?
Yes.
Sure.
Because I was provided one last year, but that didn't happen this year. It's actually teams fundraising for uniforms.
Huh.
Yeah.
I wonder, well, okay.
New York also.
It's a reorganization.
Oh, yep, we already have that, yep, three organization, we have an organization, any other?
I wanted to talk about next year's meeting schedule and see, and this might be in the agenda for a joint meeting as well, uh, if you feel that it's more appropriate, um, but I think it would be great if we could coordinate, uh, our meetings and streamline things for the administration. uh, our meetings and streamline things for the administration and for ourselves, but I think that's a family suggestion.
And then Ron will stay.
It's all to make Ron stay.
Out of peer pressure.
To keep Ron sane. No more doodles. Great. Anything else for next meeting? All right. Moving on, the next item on the agenda, um, is to consider approval of the following minutes, although I actually had a question on the um, open session minutes of the twenty-sixth. So before we do this, do any of us have any questions on any other minutes for the open session meetings of either March nineteenth or March twenty-sixth? Well, then, I would entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes of March nineteenth as presented. Motion by Ms. Ferrer, and seconded by Ms. O'Brien, anything on discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted?
I'll abstain.
Thank you.
I wasn't on the committee.
And then I had a question and I, it's quite possible I'm wrong. Um, but I noticed on the open session minutes of March twenty-sixth, under um, the public hearing on budget, it says that, um, Mr. Taro, about the one, two, the fourth line down, the district will receive an increase of seventy dollars per student in chapter seventy funds, that should be thirty dollars per student, is that right?
Yes, thirty, it was a minimum at that.
Okay, we got the minimum, right? I wish it were seventy, but, so that was the only correction I had. Do you have any others? So I would entertain a motion to approve, um, the open session minutes of March twenty-sixth as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ferrer, and seconded by Mr. Fenstermaker, anything on discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I'll abstain, thank you.
And then at this time, I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees asked me, paraprofessional and custodial units in cafeteria MOA, um, and pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirement to consider the release, reduction, and withholding of the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four executive session minutes and the March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four executive session minutes, and the committee will return to open session. So moved. Motion by Ms. Ashley, and seconded by Ms. O'Brien, uh, anything on discussion? We'll do a roll call, though, um, those in favor, Mr. Machado?
Aye.
Ms. Ashley?
Aye.
Mr. Fenstermaker?
Aye.
Ms. O'Brien?
Aye.
Ms. Ferrero?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right, so we will return to open session, we're going to defer the first item on the agenda, um, approval of MOA, uh, as we do not have that yet. Um, and we'll move on to the second item on the agenda, which is approval of executive session minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the following executive session minutes as presented, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, and March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion by Mr. Machado, seconded by Mr. Fenstermaker, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I'll abstain.
So voted. Next on the agenda, I would um, entertain a motion to release the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four executive session minutes and to release the March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four executive session minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Machado, and seconded by Ms. Fenstermaker, anything on discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I'll abstain.
So voted. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion by Ms. Ferrer, and seconded by Ms. Ashley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.